All right, it's nine o'clock. We will call the special meeting, November fourteenth, special meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to order. Supervisor Grove, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hang on, we're not, we're not being broadcast yet.
It's all right, we're all still learning.
Luckily, you're not taking the test today.
Do the end. Don't do this again. There we go.
Okay, please, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in every and justice for all.
Right. All right. We have some consent calendar items. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public or has any questions or comments on an item in the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do you have any public comment on the consent calendar? A ring and none?
I have no chance.
All right.
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Hold a second. Any further discussion? All right.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Fraser?
Aye. Oh.
Supervisor Cox?
You're muted, Jill.
Good morning, um, you called my name, does that mean you're in a vote? What are you doing?
We were voting on the consent calendar, so.
Okay, aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. There's only one. Transportation, item three point one, discuss and/or provide direction to the Director of Transportation regarding how to proceed in regards to the slide on Canyon Creek Road. Costs are estimated to be four million dollars with seventy-five percent being reimbursed by CBAA.
Good morning, Panos Kogas, Director of Transportation. We're waiting for some slides to come up.
I have two on here.
I'm sorry?
There's two items.
All right.
Can you push the? This icon right, let's see if that, the one right here. Let's see, right, that one. There you go, thank you. Uh, this is about Canyon Creek storm damage on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one. This is the initial photograph when the damage occurred. Let's go to the next slide, apparently this thing doesn't work. Uh, this is going to show us the magnitude of the damage, uh, on that day. This is one of our crew trucks and one of the people standing next to it, then as we can tell, the whole road is covered up. Since then, we're able to have a temporary road opening and it's shown, uh, through this area through here. And we kept it for a temporary time. We tried to have a contractor come on board to clear it and stabilize the rocks because the crew said, as they tried to remove the material to open the road, more things kept on coming down. The rocks on the slope, they were loose, so they're afraid for the safety and it was a good thing that they did not proceed any farther. We tried to get a contractor initially in the summer to clean the material, but then the prices were a little too high, so we decided to go to public bidding. We finally were able to get one contractor to bid for a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars to stabilize the rock face, as you can tell in the side. Go to the next slide. And the people climbing on the rock slope side and they start pushing down rocks and we can see the rocks coming down along with the dust. Then again, here they are, uh, they're moving all the loose rocks that, uh, our crews, uh, observed during cleanup. And they kept on going, next slide. And as you can tell, there is more loose material coming down. So this is material that they just kind of pried with bars, it didn't take very much effort. And then, since they finished everything and everything was safe, they're taking the materials away with their excavator. According to the contractor, the slope was stabilized, there would be no problem, so they were taking material out. And of course, uh, they were wrong. Here we can see the excavator. All damaged because more material came down. What it seems to happen is as the material was removed from the base, it started taking the support from the slope and more material came down. I did not have much experience with, uh, rocks and rock slopes because my past experience has been building bridges, roads, water system. Now, the more I started studying about rocks and their behavior, I came across a concept that's known as frost wedging. This is when the water goes into open fissures in the rock slope. And then when it freezes and it doesn't take very much, they say three degrees to eight degrees Celsius negative. Which is about seventy degrees Fahrenheit to about twenty-six Fahrenheit. That's all it takes. For that ice to form and start pushing the rocks away. And to my surprise, from what I have read, was that the pressure per square inch of that ice is close to thirty thousand pounds. That's per square inch. This is unheard of because the best concrete we use to build bridges and large structures, it's about five to six thousand pounds per square inch. That's how much strength it is, so this is tremendous strength. And the people who climb the slope, they said they've seen a lot of fissures and a lot of openings. Actually, Andy and I went, Mr. Pence and I went out to look at the site. And they told us as they're scaling the site, they put their ropes way up forty, fifty feet away from the slope wall. And as they're coming down, two of them fell into some openings that are five to six feet deep and they had their gear to climb out. So those openings are covered with brush, with moss, so they didn't even know they were there. So we don't know what's on the top of those rocks, how much water is coming in, uh, how, what is going to come down. We discussed this project with, uh, Ca- the California Office of Emergency Services, CALOES. Because this storm was declared by the governor, which the county is eligible to receive about seventy-five percent reimbursement of the total cost. But has not been declared a national storm by FEMA. If this storm was declared national storm and FEMA would be involved, then the county would be reimbursed seventy-five percent from FEMA. And then the remaining twenty-five percent would get reimbursement about seventy-five percent from the state, from the state. And then the cost to the county would be a little less than seven percent of the total cost. In this case, the cost to the county is going to be about twenty-five percent. The contractors who looked, who worked on the site and whose excavator is being blow that rubble. They gave us a preliminary estimate and they said it can be at least four million dollars. But they didn't know if that was correct or not. But for that, they thought they can clear the site and stabilize it. Which means the county has to pay about a million dollars. As the matching for the, uh, state money. If the contractor is wrong and it can cost more money, that means the county will be responsible for more than a million, million and a half, whatever it takes to stabilize it. If we're flush with cash, I'll say, no problem, let's go for it. But looking at our small transportation budgets. And our sixty thousand people that we have to serve. Uh, it is rather difficult for me to make that recommendation without knowing where is the rest of the funding is going to come from. Because if we use a transportation funding to take care of this issue, then we would not be able to take care of any other issues in the county. Or have any employees as, as far as that goes to the Transportation Department. So I'm here for your guidance. Push the next slide. There is a better close up. And one more. At this stage, uh, one more, I think. Here it is, we closed the road for safety purposes. Uh, we cannot in good faith, uh, have the road open when there is an active landslide. So for as far as the Department of Transportation is concerned, this road is closed. And we cannot recommend people to go one way or the other. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions, panels. Will this ever become a FEMA disaster?
No, uh, the FEMA disaster has to be declared within a month or two of the event.
Right now, what are the twenty odd people who live behind this road closure doing to get in and out, ingress and egress?
I think there is an opening through there that people are going back and forth. However, from the Department of Transportation, we cannot say the road is open, that's why I put the closed road signs on both sides of the slide.
But they are finding a way to get home.
I think there is a way, if we can go and look in one of the slides, I think the second from the last or the third from the last. Uh, this one. Again, this pathway, it's not part of the road, it's part of the shoulder. And to the left of that pathway, where you see those rocks, go back again. If you see where those, uh, rocks are on the side. Uh, to the left, that's where it starts a steep embankment of the creek. So it isn't flat in that area.
So which, which part of the, are they using to get to their homes?
Uh, those two tracks that you see in the left side of the screen, in the bottom lower part. Right through there, and then if you go farther to the left with your mouse, where those rocks are, right to the left of that, about two or three feet, it's a steep embankment going down to the creek.
Are they using quads or their own four-wheel drive vehicles?
I don't know.
Anybody know? Looks like pickup tracks, but. That's all for now, thank you.
Yeah, is there an alternative route, uh, to go around this area? Uh, if, if we were going to spend. Uh, my biggest worry at this point is we're going to spend four million dollars and then the mountain's going to slide after that, that's going to be a continuing problem. So is there an alternate route that we could upgrade a road to get around that area?
From what I can tell, this is a dead-end street, there is nothing beyond it.
So there's no way around?
No way around it right now. It's a one-way road, one way in, one way out.
And the, the top half of this is, is how many miles of force service at the end of this?
I can't remember.
It's not very many miles, maybe one or two miles of force service at the end, but we have another, we, ten miles of road. Is that about right or? You guys know better than me.
It's, it's about ten miles beyond that, uh, that road closure.
Okay.
And then it's a trailhead for the Trinity Alps.
Right.
Lot of tourists and stuff, they go up in there, like around.
We abandoned the last mile or two some years back, there weren't any houses, I believe, out there, so we abandoned the road for service at the very end, but that's just, that's way out there.
I will say for the rec.
Right.
I'll say for the record that that is the most highly used trailhead and is, uh, in the Alps. And is the number one on the list for federal highways redo, uh, that we lost out two or three years ago for a twenty million dollar. Upgrade to that road, so. No further questions.
I, I do have one, a question that, um. I don't know if you'll have the answer to, but what is the plan for removing the excavator from the rubble pile? Because I imagine that's something that's going to happen sooner rather than later.
Yes, we'd rather do that sooner than later, like you said. Again, our contracting authority is nonexistent, we have to come back to the board for the contractor to remove the excavator. Because this is way above and beyond the amount of money that he. That we committed for him. It was just to clean the rubble before the additional material coming down. So since the contract is a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars for the work to complete what was there before the slide. We have to come back to the board, I think the contractor said about seventy-one thousand dollars. Extra for them to remove the rubble and remove the excavator. So we'll have to come back to the board to ask for permission to get that funding.
Would that be seventy-five percent of them, twenty-five percent of us?
Uh, yes, we're going to owe twenty-five percent of that.
Was there any environmental leakage, gas, oil, when it got crushed?
I don't think we can see anything.
So panels, in your opinion, with these type projects, would going over budget twenty, twenty-five percent be uncommon?
Oh, this type of project? I, I don't have any experience in it, but twenty-five percent to fifty percent, it's not uncommon. Because we have a lot of unknowns.
Right.
Uh, even the state geologist who went to see the site, uh, he looked at it and he had about, I believe, I think there, reported it's part of the agenda item. A hundred-foot section beyond the face of the slope that they showed as being unstable. And again, my memory is not correct about how far from the face of the slope, but that's where they showed the area that's unstable, that maybe need to be removed. Again, the contractor came up with a concept of clearing the materials, removing the loose, loose materials, and then drilling anchors into the rock and then putting a net. And that net's supposed to be about four million dollars. And the factor of safety on that in the report is one point one, and I'm an engineer, I'm risk averse, we never designed anything with a factor of safety of one point one. We like to have it a lot higher, one point five, one point seven, something that we can be sure of. And those are the preliminary findings of a geotechnical engineer who specializes in rock stabilization. And again, it's their opinion and that's what they think without doing more testing on the side. That's based on the photographs that they viewed.
So this is most likely best-case scenario?
That's the best-case scenario, from what I can tell.
So chances of this going higher are better than going, or staying the same, I would imagine?
Again, I don't know, depends on the site conditions, uh, what they are once they get in.
So we should agree that they won't go down?
I don't believe they're going to go down.
Okay, just wanted, uh, the Supervisor Cox, have a hand up? Oh, sorry.
No, that's all, I'd just seen it say so on my screen.
Supervisor Cox, um, thank you, um, Director Kogas, can you talk a little bit about, um, liability and risk to those who are traveling? Have they been, when you've closed the road, have they been recommended to, to try to stay somewhere else? Or do they go back and forth over that road at their own risk?
From the transportation perspective, when you have a slide like this where rock slides are imminent, what we do, we close the roads for the public safety. We put K rails on instead of the regular wood, uh, barricades, because in my experience in the past when there were flooded roads. People would take the wood barricades and throw them into the ditch. And we didn't want that to happen and people would drive by without seeing the road closed sign, so we put them on concrete barricades. So the barricades would stay in place. Our recommendation is for no one to travel through because in the event that's a rock slides and they hit a car, then we're liable for allowing travel.
So basically, you're saying if they move through there, they do so at their own risk?
We don't recommend it.
I see. Thank you.
Panels, but they do do it at their own risk, not at the county risk, correct?
I, again, uh, from our pers- yes, at their own risk. W- w- in, in public works, it's not legal or illegal to recommend or not recommend, in this case, we do not recommend ro- travel. That's why I put the road closed signs, if they want to go through at their own risk, it's fine. But as far as the county is concerned, the road is closed, again, for our own safety, from liability.
Can we go back to the excavator, the? I understand that we would have to pay more money to re- remove more rocks. But the excavator was parked there by a professional in a hazardous spot. And why is, is, is there a cost that they must incur? Or why would we have to pay for their bad decision?
Well, part of the extra money is, uh, they assumed a certain amount of rock to be removed. And they removed already a little bit more than they initially, uh, estimated. And that cost is going to remove the extra rocks, uh, that they did not estimate on the original agreement. Uh, the excavator don't have to pay for anything, that's beyond.
Okay.
Beyond us, the seventy-one thousand for, would not be able to get part of the excavator. That excavator will be probably close to four hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other technical questions before we open the public comment?
I have a question for Letty, so say this is a million, million two. And obviously, we don't have that type of money here right now. How many? Unless we came up with a creative way of, of funding the money, how many budget cycles would it take us to go through to, to kind of find this excess? excess? I could see this thing being a million-five by the time things are done. How do how do we plan that in the future, knowing that that is going to be somewhat of a, we'll say, a fixed cost coming up? Is it going to take us two, three budget cycles to kind of put this in place?
It's it's going to take quite a bit of analyzing, you know, as as tough as it was preparing this year's budget. It's really hard to say, Supervisor Gogan. We would just have to hopefully find some other resources. We do have some potential funds coming from the federal government, but again, it's not guaranteed. So there's a lot to discuss and review. So.
Thank you.
Uh, one more question, too, I guess, with panels. When when this went out to the contractors and stuff for quote on slope stabilization, did you get multiple ideas on how to stabilize this slope, or was it only we're going to bolt it and put up the netting and all that stuff? Or did they were there lower-cost alternatives?
When we went initially to the contractors, there were none of the ideas other than remove the loose rocks like they have done before, and then move it away and it should be stable. During the process of the initial rock removal, the additional material came down and destroyed the excavator. Since then, we went to a geotechnical consultant who specializes in that type of work. And they're the ones who gave us several options. Their best option is to have some a net put on and which is going to be rocked anchored into the slope. The other option, they said, is just to remove some of the rocks, remove the loose rocks. However, the probability of additional rocks coming down was still there and they could not guarantee that. So they gave us three different options, but that was the option that's supposed to be the most secure. If we use the option where they can cleanly take the loose rocks out and we open the road and more rocks are coming down and they hit someone, then we have a lot of liability. Knowing, allowing allowing people to cross a road that has the potential for rock slides.
I think we have a lot of roads in Trinity County with that potential, but it will save that for discussion. Or any other?
Yes, parents, I have a question. I don't know anything about rocks or the falling of rocks, but I did talk to a few people over the weekend that do know a little more than I do. And they said with the size of the rocks that could fall, even if they did put rods in place to hold it, the size of the sheets of those rocks that could fall, a fence would not be an adequate structure to hold back potentially the size and the weight of these rocks.
I I think they're correct because I see the size of the rocks there on the excavator and don't know what type of anchoring are they going to use to hold them down? Uh, and what type of net they're going to have, how far back they have to lay the slope, because if it's vertical, the forces are different based on a slope that's laid back, a little smoother slope. So I might, whatever I say, it's a guess.
Yeah, and I asked them about vertical and and laid back. And so when you lay back a slope, you also collect more rainwater in the cracks, which does indeed make it split more. When you cut it straight up and down, you collect less rainwater in the cracks, but you stand a better chance of falling off. So you're kind of darned if you do, darned if you don't.
I don't know which option is better.
I don't I don't either, nor did they. And they were professionals.
So is there a instead of giving an okay to go all in, is there a process where we say proceed, but let's get the best options? Because obviously, right now, there's not a lot of, there's a lot of guesswork going on. But is is there a cautious way to move forward? Or are you just looking in general to say, do we just close this road and tell people tough or or do we just commit to all all of it right now?
It's not my call to say, close the road and tell people it's tough. That's why I'm here.
I I understand that, but I I was making that. What exactly? I don't feel comfortable with saying, go ahead and do the netting today. Right? And go spend $4 million. But I am comfortable, and this is getting a little far out there. It let let me back that off. I would be very interested in having more information and updating and proceeding forward without making a total commitment.
Well, we can go through and do one of the options they recommended that's a less expensive, where we can clear the materials, remove the remaining loose rocks from the slope. And however, they did recommend that one as a permanent solution because of the potential for more slides coming down. But we can proceed to that option, which is going to be less expensive, probably close to two or three million dollars. I I don't know exactly what. But things are constantly evolving there. Once they think they remove all the loose rocks, more rocks are coming down. So it'd be kind of an open checkbook, so to speak, until they can clear the road, at least with one lane. That would be my preference, so people can still go back and forth. It worked fine before we started removing the rocks. But we did remove the rocks because of the potential of the loose rocks coming down on the one-lane road. And that's why we went in to begin with. If we if we have known that this would happen, we probably left it as it was. And yet it may happen later on as the winter progresses.
So so bringing in more engineers or looking at it with other eyes, you don't feel that that's a real benefit, that you have confidence in the people you've talked to, and these are the the solutions?
We talked to one consulting engineer who specializes in that, and it came in through the contractor. And there was the gentleman from the California Geological Survey who also observed the site in his report. I believe it's in your packet. It shows the area where the potential issues are. He did not come up with any recommendations other than just showing there are some issues through here. We can have him review that report and get his opinion to see which way we should proceed. Again, he's both an engineer and a geologist, works for the State of California. He does not have an interest one way or the other, other than the safety. There is no money to be made by him.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is Jeremy. Um, I've got a question. Assuming that the slide gets worse, and let's say went and crossed over the whole road again all the way into the creek. What would that would that trigger any difference of action? Or would we be in the same predicament if the road was entirely unpassable physically?
Uh, from the California Office of Emergency Services, the payment amount would still be the same. They're not going to give us any other options. They're just going to reimburse a 75% of our costs.
So either way, at some point, either now or in the future, we're going to have to pay the 25% to get this job repaired regardless?
Yes.
Thank you.
I still would quit. I I have a question still about the the crushed excavator and the removal of that and why we would have to pay for them to remove that. I think that that would be on the contractor and their insurance. They're insured. They that was not the county's fault that their that their excavators crushed. And it would seem to me that we would get that would be on them to move that excavator. And I think that that's something that should be done before we start opening the the road and those things, because there's a big hole there that when you pull that excavator out, something's going to move. So if we go and say, we're going to fix this road and leave an excavator buried in there. To me, that's one of the questions I would have is, why would that be us to pay for that? Um, and not on the contractor, their insurance? I mean, I've been in those kind of industries before. When your equipment gets crushed, it's on you. It's not on the guy you were working for. So that would be something I would want to hear more about and then proceed after that. Do we have any other technical questions from supervisors on Zoom?
Only regarding the potential monies. Letty mentioned the federal monies that said, you said they weren't secured or guaranteed, but there's prospect. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, there's a another portion of the American Rescue Plan Act that the Department of Treasury has reached out to our county to inform us of some potential funding. And again, I just want to mention that cautiously, because again, nothing's guaranteed until we receive it. So there is some potential funds coming.
And what's the amount? Potential amount?
The first, the first amount is 4.8 million.
I think.
Yes.
All right. Well, I guess.
One more question for panels. I'm sorry. So when they decide to pull this excavator out, will they come in and pick it up and move it out, or will they scoop rock, move that rock, and then pull it out?
What we want them to what we want them to do is to move the rocks so they can open one lane of road, at least for the people to go through. That's our aim. The excavator is their part. But our aim is to make sure at least one lane of road is open. You can put some type of a K rail so people can go back and forth. I know it's a large hardship for all the people who live in that area.
So would it not be also on on them to pay for the moving of the rock to get to the excavator?
You know, I you you're correct, but again, you have to go and looking at the look at the contracting language, what it said, what you're responsible, what they're responsible. Because sometimes contractors say we're going to do X. And if Y happens due to acts of God, so to speak, something unforeseen, then we may still be liable for the additional cost.
That understandable, but I think that's something we need to we need to look into.
That's what we have to look at. That's why I did not respond one way or the other. Depends on the contract, how it's written, and in this type of situation. If it's something beyond the control of the contractor or it's acts of God, so to speak, then we may be liable because we hire them.
All right.
Okay, well, with that, I guess we can open public comment.
Go ahead and come up to the podium so we can. People on Zoom can't hear you unless you use microphone.
I work on that road quite a bit throughout the year and stuff like that. We shouldn't have to pay for them to remove the excavator. If they knew that it was an active slide, that there was huge fissures all over in place, and yet they parked their excavator directly under it for like a week. I I don't see how that's how this county should have to pay for their negligence. That's all. That's all I want to say. Woodrow Hanger.
Have any other public comment? I think I've seen someone a hand on Zoom.
Yeah, this is Josh Wagner. I'm actually with the contractor. Wanted to just make myself available for for questions and it's all right. I'd like to comment on the the excavator itself.
Yeah, you you can comment.
Yeah, so the the cost that was discussed is not for removing the excavator. That is absolutely on us. You know, we have we have an insurance policy to pay for things like that. The, you know, ballpark $70,000 that panels had discussed was due to an increase in scope of scaled material. So the extra time it took to scale the loose debris and then the cost to haul off that debris. There there's no cost being directed to the county for the excavator itself, just to be crystal clear.
All right, and I do have one question. If do you have any kind of timeline for removal?
You know, we had held off on removal until we kind of got some direction from the county on which direction you wanted to go. And what I mean by that is, you know, from from a bare minimum standpoint, we can clear the debris from the base of the slope, but in the process, remove the excavator and then, you know, leave the site and you guys can can, you know, proceed as as is. Alternatively, if you authorize additional work on site, then, you know, first thing we got to do anyways is clear the base of the slope and remove the excavator. So it's it's kind of dependent on on the county's timeline. You know, ideally in the next week or two or or less. Just kind of need to to understand what the direction is going to be. I can also make some comments on the design standpoint if if folks are interested.
Sure.
So the the solutions that that were put together in the preliminary report, like like Pano said, there there's kind of some tiers, right? Like the lowest-cost option for the county is actually the highest risk. And and, you know, the the matrix of decision-making kind of goes goes in that direction, where the higher the cost, the lower the risk down the road. So that mesh system that was described, what that actually looks like is a series of anchors drilled back into the slope, anywhere from 10 feet deep to 30 feet deep. And and how deep those anchors are is dependent on the depth of the joints and the orientation in the joints, the location of the anchor itself. The idea is you you want to obviously embed that that anchor beyond where you see the fractures. And in any event, you know, you can ultimately chase these things infinitely. You know, if you cut a new hillside 300 feet back, the rock will have natural fractures, but we can dial this in and capture the the local failures by getting those anchors right past past those joint sets. So imagine you have one anchor every six or seven feet. The length is dependent on the joints. That's going to provide global stability to the rock mass that's out there. What we'll do that is is over those anchors, install a high tensile strength wire mesh. And that'll be tensioned down against the slope. So if any small material in between adjacent anchors pops out, it'll be held in place by the mesh itself. Now, the last thing you got to consider is what what's the likelihood of encountering fractures that my anchors won't address? And so what we can add into the scope of work and what we have considered, at least internally on our end, is just low-pressure permeation grouting through some of those fractures. We noted that there were some tension cracks beyond the brow that were pretty pretty open, right? In the order of 12 to 24 inches wide. There might be an opportunity to just allow cementitious material. Again, low pressure, you don't want to put any pressure into that slope. But you you want to be able to close some of those fractures and prevent water from infiltrating down the road. It just felt like it'd be a good idea to kind of give you guys an overview of where we're sitting right now in terms of of our methodologies. We did ask that the geotech that we're working with provide those multiple options. And so there's a table in the report that that provides a summary. That's three and a half to to 4 million, you know, those are all swags, right? Until we we get the approval to proceed with dialing in those costs, you know, that that's a range. I I noted at one point, there was a conversation about factor of safety. The report calls out a factor of safety of 1.1 pseudostatic, which is to say seismic conditions, right? So in engineering, you you have two design cases, one for like, hey, what's your average every day? And we call that static. And that's what you want to shoot for a 1.5 factor of safety. Uh, and then the other use case or design case would be seismic conditions. What what do I have to account for if there was an earthquake? Because, you know, here in California, you got to make sure that those systems still perform. Otherwise, every retaining wall, every bridge, every road, you know, would ultimately suffer some kind of catastrophic failure. That 1.1 noted in the report is pseudostatic. It is the seismic case. So we will be at that 1.5 for the static condition. Which, again, I don't see the cost escalating beyond what we've discussed. Especially knowing that that we have in this preliminary assessment, at least dialed in a factor of safety of 1.5 static.
Uh, thank you. Do you have any other, any other public comment?
No.
I have.
I have. Can go? Can you hear us?
Yes.
There's actually five of us at a residence that live up in Canyon Creek and we haven't been going through the slide and there are four of us who would like to speak.
Well, just state your name as you take turns and you'll each have your three minutes and we'll keep track that way.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tabitha Plu. I live, I'm the first house on the left when you get through the slide. I'm also a general contractor. I'm a general contractor. I have a lot of experience in emergency road cleanup. I don't specialize in rock necessarily, but I have been a part of several major slides and repairs down in central California. My major concern is that it seems like there's a misplaced priority between liability and public safety. There's a barricade that's partially blocking the road that says road closed. We have actually not been contacted by the county about the status of the road. We've actually been diligent and communicating ourselves. And we've been having mixed messages, sort of like what's been happening today. We're told that the DOT is requiring the road to be closed because of the unsafe condition that it's in. But we're also being told by the county that, well, we can't stop you guys from going through. So as a contractor, I know that if this were my job site, I absolutely could not let the public go through because it is extremely unstable and we couldn't risk public safety and that liability. So on that other, on the other hand, I understand that it takes a lot of time and effort to generate funding, especially with limited resources in a county like this. But we, we are also a part of the community outside of Canyon Creek and it affects the entire community. Educators, public utilities, business owners, doctors. And we can't get out. Well, we can get out, but at our own risk. And even the pictures, even the pictures that you saw a little bit ago, you could see that it looks like a four wheel drive trail, but many of us don't have four wheel drives or we have small cars and that doesn't work. So looking at my notes real quick. Also, somebody addressed the, the excavator being there and that there's no visible sign of leakage. Well, you have a protected waterway right on the other side, right at the bottom of that slope. And I guarantee you with the damage that there is to that excavator, that there is leakage from some sort of diesel or oil coming out of that machine. So when we were talking about a timeframe, I would feel like that excavator needs to be removed before there's any other environmental impact to that waterway right there. So as far as urgency goes, I feel like we, we're being forgotten about up this canyon and feel like there needs to be some sense of urgency. Thank you for your time. Do you want the next person or do you want to?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Just as long as they state their name so we know who they are.
So yes, my name is Deb Hall and I live a little over seven miles up Canyon Creek. Today is starting the fourteenth day with the road quote officially closed on Canyon Creek. I refuse to drive through a road closed when it is stated that it's highly unstable and very, very dangerous. I feel like I should not put myself or my granddaughter, who I am the legal guardian, so I should not break the law to go through a very dangerous situation. We have forty-nine people up here, not around twenty. So, and they range from three years old all the way up until their mid eighties. We are running low on medications. I refuse to take my daughter through to school. I don't know how that's going to work. We are doing homeschool. We have three teachers. We have a utility worker. We have a retired doctor. No mail service is being up here because of the slide. Something has to be done. When you say this is urgent, where's the urgency for us here above the canyon? And yes, people are going through on their own. You guys say, quote, you're, it's your own way to get through basically. Well, I feel like that's really unsafe. If you're going to put a road closed, you either close it or you open it. But I am asking if it's going to be open for us to take a chance. Put a monitor up there, a person with a stop sign. We pull up like we did before. Eight o'clock in the morning, you have a half an hour. Go through, clear the road for us to get through on the other side so we can deal with our everyday life. And then again, either mid afternoon or early evening so we can come home. We need to care for our homes up here. We have animals. We have different things up here. We cannot just leave and wait for something to happen because it's all about money. Money I know is very important, but our lives are important. I don't know what to say. I don't, there, there is no miracle. I get that. But somebody needs to acknowledge us up here. The holidays are coming. Privately, it's very upsetting for me that I can't go spend time with my family because I refuse to go through an unstable situation that you refuse. We've been left hanging. I'm, I have contacted every single day, workday. I'm the one that has called the road department, OES, the sheriff. Anybody involved. I am basically been the mouth, mouthpiece. And I'm I just want something resolved. Thank you very much. The next person will be on in just a minute.
Hi, I'm Megan Curran. I'm Megan Curran. I've lived on Canyon Creek for fifty years. I want to commend our local road crew because I know they have pride. And over the years, I have seen them repair and fix slides, maybe not as bad as that, but close. And, and they did it and they got us up and down and out of this canyon. And I just wanted to make sure that you know that there's ten children that go to school here. Four of them are not because they're staying on the other side of the slide. But the others are going to school because their parents work at the school. And my daughter had to take three days off and it was personal leave. So it was either come back to work or lose her job and she's a teacher. So we have to do something. And then my, my question about the emergency funding was answered. But I also like Yosemite, their roads have been fixed. Two ninety-nine, their roads get fixed when there's giant slides. And Sky Ranch had a washout two years ago and they were fixed. We had a washout in two thousand seventeen and it's never been repaired. And I, it was mentioned but Canyon Creek brings in lots of tourists, which means money also. And I heard that one of the reasons that federal grant was taken away from us was because the paperwork was never finished on it. So, I mean, I don't know, that could be a rumor, but I want to say I really, really feel that you've left us with no recourse. We need propane, we need food, you know, so something needs to change. And I have phone calls in to Mike McGuire and Jared Huffman. And I'll go farther if I have to, and I would hope that it could stop here. Thank you very much.
That was the last of the people who wish to speak.
All right, thank you. Grab any others?
I have no other raised hands, no new chats.
Right, that will close the public comment. Oh, Noah raised a hand. Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, this is Noah Corp. I live about ten miles up Canyon Creek Road. I'd like to echo everything that's been said on the public comment, in addition to the suggestion to the board of supervisors. Because this is such a huge project and it seems to be a financial hardship on the county. And it also seems to me that you're having some difficulty making the decision whether to fix it or not to fix it or how to fix it. So I would encourage all of the supervisors, including the Department of Transportation head, to come up Canyon Creek and see it for yourself. And that way you can see the scope of what's actually going on and you can see the people and the community that lives up here. Thank you very much.
No new chats, no raised hands.
All right. That will close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I have a few questions. One is for, is Joshua Wagner still here? I don't know.
Yes, sir.
So if you left your excavator underneath the slide and it got crushed, would you not be responsible for the excavation of all the rocks getting to your excavator and getting it out? I don't feel the county should pay any of that, honestly.
Well, the rock would have come down on, on the road, whether or not there, there was an excavator there, right? So the, the cost again is the additional scaling that was performed and the cost to remove that debris. By no means is there any cost directly associated with the excavator. They're, they're two separate components, if, if you will.
Jill has a question. Supervisor Cox has a question.
Go ahead Supervisor Cox.
Um, thank you. So I know there's all this discussion about how we're going to pay for it and eventually we will figure out how to pay for it. What I would like to see us is to prioritize our discussion based on what it is that we're going to do to help these folks. To have some sort of, I don't know what we do. Do we have like some kind of state of local emergency? We prioritize making safe passage as quickly as possible so that people can travel back and forth. Not under conditions of a closed road that, you know, that is a dangerous situation. So could I ask Director Cox what, what that would look like? How quickly could we assure safe passage for those people? And, and what would the, what would that process look like?
Safe passage means that there is no longer the possibility of the rocks coming down the slope. And at this stage, we're not sure of that. There are a lot of loose rocks and the possibility of those coming down is there at all times. Cleaning part of the road and making the slope more stable would be a way to allow the people through. However, at this stage, regardless how much we clean the road, the unstable slope is still going to be a danger.
Okay, so if we were to move down a path toward that safe end, what's the timeline that we're, we're looking at?
That I can't speak about. It could be probably Mr. Wagner who's online, who can tell us how long it would take to remove the additional material and to stabilize the slope where people can still go through.
Yeah, so kind of our game plan here is, you know, assuming the, the scenario where the county chooses to proceed with what we're calling a permanent stabilization of the slope. All the materials that we would use are readily available. We've had discussions with our vendors. Can get those out on site pretty quickly. We have crews more or less on standby. You know, again, I'm kind of speaking a little off the cuff here, right? But in the event that we get authorized in the next twenty-four hours, we can get out on site, clear the debris, get our excavator out there, start drilling, material shows up, you know, for, for the mesh while we're drilling our anchors. And it may be all in, you're looking at a thirty to, to forty day process. Obviously, there, there would be some standby time for the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday, but you know, we, we've done a lot of these emergency projects for Caltrans, for other DOTs. I think Yosemite was mentioned. We're working on the Ferguson slide outside Yosemite National Park. We've done projects on two ninety-nine, on highway thirty-six, on highway one. You know, we're, this is our sweet spot. This is where we live. We have the resources to move very quickly. But yeah, my, my guess is we're probably going to be in that thirty to forty day timeline from start to finish. During which, you know, every day you're installing more anchors, you're, you're gradually increasing the, I guess, what you would call the, the safety for the traveling public. You know, we could have additional traffic control measures out there to make sure that the public can pass, you know, several times per day during construction, which is kind of the scenario when we started our scaling project. You know, we, we want to make sure that folks can get in and out, right? It, it doesn't have to be a, it, it's shut down until we're all complete.
Okay, well, my two cents is I don't, I don't see right in front of me how many days it's been since, since this took place. But those days have passed. The next thirty to forty days that you're anticipating it's going to take to get the job done, those days are going to pass. So the sooner we start, and the sooner people can, can have their lives back and that would, that would be my wish.
Motion before we get too far in discussion.
That would be great.
I will move that we go ahead with the permanent solution as described with the netting. Of course, we're going to have to have, well, that's, that's my motion.
I would second that. Oh, I'll let Jeremy. That's fine.
It's okay. As long as it gets done up there.
No, put it on the record. It's Jeremy Ashley, please.
So a, is discussion, I, I don't see any way that we cannot move forward and, and help these people. And the ability of the contractor to allow kids to get to school and the male to get through and people to get their medicine is of course what, what we're here for is to help these people out. I would definitely ask CAO and, and Panos and the whole team to try to find whatever monies we can to to lessen the burden on, on the rest of the county and future projects that we have, but well, and that's, that's it for my discussion.
Has, was Jill going to go? Sorry. No, has the Forest Service or CalFire been talked to about this? This is a major fire ingress negress and a large trailhead to one of our most used trails in the county. Are, are they chipping in at all or is there a way to get them to chip in at all?
Go ahead, Panos.
They have been informed of the slide and that the road is closed, but that's about it. They have not volunteered at all. And I don't have too much experience with the Forest Service, but other federal agencies have not been usually up to the table to volunteer, regardless how much you push it. However, if there is some congressional pressure and goes through the top, it may. Again, this was not declared as a federal emergency because it did not have the magnitude. In order for FEMA to get involved, I think it has to be more than fifty million dollars worth of damage. Otherwise, it's only declared by the governor, a smaller emergency. So that's why FEMA was not involved. It's not that paperwork was not filed correctly.
Should we get Christie in there to look at, to see if there's any environmental damage before we begin moving of the excavator? That is a sensitive creek there and I don't know how many gallons or quarts of diesel or oil those things hold, but I'm sure it's a bunch. Being kind of a fish guy, I'd like to know how far that, that did spread, if it did spread at all.
Probably have to remove some of the rock before you could ever start that investigation.
I, I caution us to get too into micromanage, just that the statement that we had are very concerned about the environmental damage and make sure the county watches over it would probably be the.
Yeah, I would, I would almost say that if there was any environmental damage by now, it would leak down across the road into the creek, just to, just to make sure and I'm not trying to up the cost or anything. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't run into an extra cost with environmental cleanup that goes along with the excavation of the rocks and the excavator that we're not prepared to pay for. Which could be very Which could be very expensive. We have any, in, sorry, we have a couple locals here. Is there any possible way for you guys?
This is kind of uh, in the, we're past the public comment stage and in the discussion amongst the board stage now.
I've got a comment, um, as, as mentioned in the staff report, um, as far as the immediate. Use and reallocation of funds goes, it mentions um, how these funds were gonna go to a road. Uh, chip and sealer and um, I don't think there was one other item in there that was mentioned for some um, expenses that were planned. And I guess I would, I'm curious if we can add to this that um. If those federal dollars do come in that CAO Garza discussed. If that, that could be earmarked to, to go back towards the um, chip sealer and the other roadwork.
I have no comment other than just what the board wishes, just let me know.
I think that's a conversation probably for later, when we see if those funds come through at what timing and um, that's a whole. That's a whole great big conversation all in itself. I think what is before us right now is taking care of these people in the most expeditious way that we can.
Joshua, you had mentioned. Forty days or so for clearing of the rocks. Does that include the holidays we have coming up, which is quite a few of them?
Yeah, that, that includes the um, the installation of the permanent solution. That, that's a ballpark, you know. We have to put together our formal um. Construction schedule, which we can include in our final cost estimate for, for the county's consideration. And that could include the, the holidays. What I'll say is because we're used to working in this emergency response space. Uh, we're not accustomed to working seven days a week. Uh, we're not unaccustomed to pushing right up to holidays. Uh, you know, we, we gotta be conscientious of our guys and making sure that they have time with their families. But uh, we recognize the urgency of this situation, so that thirty to forty days. Um, that, that, that's kind of a ballpark. I'll have to defer until we put together our final construction schedule, which, which will ultimately have a. You know, a, a, a formal duration that would include holidays.
Does it cost us extra to have your, your crew work through?
That would be part of the cost, the holiday season or the holidays.
Um, you know, not, not really. Again, we're, we're kind of used to this space, this, this uh, situation. So you know, the ballpark cost that we provided. Um, I think should sufficiently cover us.
Have any further discussion?
Well, I just want to remind that they also talked about that there would be traffic control for people to come in and out. So finishing the project is not as in, is a critical timeline is getting it. So we have traffic control for people to get in and out during that time period.
Access would be primary concern.
Is liability for traffic control on us or them?
Traffic control, traffic control. So the, the main, I still think the main concern is opening the road. Um, I think we, whether it's forty-nine people or forty-nine hundred people, we. Josh is kind of responsible to open the road so they have ingress and egress to their. Homes. Do we have any further discussion, any competing motions? Before we call for a vote?
To have more discussion. I don't think we've gotten to the bottom of this yet.
Well, do you?
I, I would like to ask the people of the community. A couple of questions.
People in the community had opportunity to comment in public, but what kind of questions do you have?
Because do, do they have any way safely to get in and out as a team effort? To get kids to school, to get your medicine, to do those things. I live on a one-lane road in Beavarkay. And similar thing happened to us and we kind of grouped together. And got ourselves in and out with quads, four-wheel drives. We kind of chipped in and. Alright, everybody's, you know, suddenly into the store for whatever he needs, go to the pharmacy for whatever he needs. Do you guys have that option to do right now, which would take a lot of pressure off of, of the county at this time?
The, looks like according to the pictures, they can drive around it with four-wheel drive, so they would be able to do that, but.
I was asking them, not you, Dan.
Uh, the public comments closed though, so this is um. This is for discussion between the, amongst the board. I don't, I'm not gonna open public comment again. So um, the question isn't whether or not they can survive. The question is whether or not we're gonna open the road so they don't have to survive. And that's, I think that's the most important thing right now is how are we going to open the road? Not are we going to open the road, but how are we going to do it and how quickly? So um.
I have nothing else for discussion.
Supervisor Cox?
I do not either.
Do you, would you care to make a competing motion Supervisor Gogan?
No.
Hey, the motion that I have is to move forward with the permanent solution by stabilizing and adding the netting to the slope. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
No.
Chairman Frazier?
Well, I do think that, that we could probably, if we had time, come up with a cheaper solution, I'll say yes. Because I think the most important thing is to have people have access. Alright, motion carries, so with that. We're adjourned.
Just a comment, we can't start the work yet. We have to get an updated estimate and then has to be approved by the board. Because the original contract does not allow them to proceed. By the sixth, okay.